Oh, man. Forgot my Enerpian. Where's my city manager pen? I need to leave my bling at work. It's easy to put on.
And you, were you here when during Eileen Pabla? Eileen Pabla?
Call meeting to order.
Said Mike right next to it.
We have Commissioner Norwood will not be with us tonight. All the rest are in attendance. At Commissioner, item number two, at Commissioner's request, discuss any item concerned of the regular assessment agenda of November 5th, 2019.
Are the new trash trucks online? Have they been online for a while?
There's three new trash trucks that are being, that are ordered under lease. I don't think they're here yet.
They'll be here December.
Oh, okay.
We had to wait for them to come off the December line.
I thought I saw something where the lease payment was on.
We still have, we currently have three trucks.
I don't have questions.
We're still doing the lease on those.
Okay. And I didn't hear when the new ones will be here?
December.
December, okay.
And I think this is, yeah, it's just, um...
Did you want to talk about what item is that, 8.4?
Yeah, we don't need to, but we could talk about the Cummins. We decided instead of attaching all of these, all of the easements, we would just do an Exhibit A and an Exhibit B that's a picture. And as the easements come in, we will have them accepted by you all.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other items from the agenda discussed? Okay. Item number three, present an update on the Col Lake water supply?
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Will?
We have made quite a bit of progress. We're all pretty excited and starting to pour the coal to it. The things we'd like to cover today is on the program management side. We'll talk a little bit about the environmental land acquisition, touch on our construction management at risk, then we'll go through some of the design activities, and then we want to hit a couple of things on the bottom and critical path and how we're going to lay out the, how we're going to work together as a team from here forward. Okay? Michael?
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Commission.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yep.
City Manager. Hope everyone's doing well this evening, enjoying the, actually, actual fall weather before change. Now, we're not going straight from summer to winter, so that's, that's good. The last time I presented this slide, for fact, as a matter of fact, the last several times I have presented this slide, we have had, we have not had 100% completion on our field studies. And so I'm very glad to report that with the city's help in gaining us access to some of the, some of the properties that we were not, not able to get on, that we have been able to get on those properties, and we have now completed 100% of the field study phase of the environmental assessment. We are preparing the results of those field studies and pulling them into a draft environmental assessment now that is 95% complete. And so I thought I would spend a little bit of time talking about what's remaining relative to that environmental assessment, which is reflected here on the next slide. So we intend to submit those Army Corps of Engineer required reports, those specialist reports, in December. Those, those reports are under review by your staff as we speak. Once we have addressed their review comments, we'll submit those report again targeting December for Corps of Engineers submittal. We're hoping for the actual draft environmental assessment submittal in March by, to the same agency. That will involve a public comment period where those that are interested in commenting on the, on the program from an environmental standpoint will have an opportunity to do so during that May to June timeframe. That's what we're targeting right now. And finally, again, this is all in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, which is required for your use of some of the federal dollars that are involved in this program. We're hoping for that final approval of the environmental phase to be completed by July of 2020. So that's the environmental update. As Chris mentioned, there's been a lot of progress program-wide, but none that I'm more proud of is the land acquisition progress. Of the 230 parcel packets that we've been, that are associated with this program, the notice of intent for easement have been delivered to 100% of those. Offer packets prepared for 216 of those 230. Offers actually delivered to landowners represented by 184 of the 230. Easements accepted, 99 of the 230. And we added a new, a new, new row here on this graphic to represent items or easements where our team, our land acquisition team, have exhausted all options in dealing with the landowners, and we are no longer working on those pieces of property. They are in the city's court. And we've, we call that a bridge team. So we've brought in a bridge team to help facilitate those negotiations, and there's about 17 of the 230 that are, that are in that, that realm of the land acquisition process.
Michael, before you go on, is that, is that 17, you think that's the highest that number's going to get, or you just haven't really gotten to the point when some of the easement acceptance is that you don't know for sure?
Actually, we believe that that is really close to where we're going to be. It's always the potential there'll be a couple more, but with the number of, of packets prepared and delivered and the conversations we've had to date, I don't anticipate that number to grow exponentially, but I would expect it to one or two more.
I think, I agree with that, Chris. I think, you know, on a project of this magnitude with that many parcels still outstanding.
And let me add, you know, those, those are packets where, one, they can't come together, or two, the property owner has ha, has been, has given us notice that they're represented by legal counsel. Well, I don't want engineers or land acquisition guys trying to negotiate with lawyers. Lawyers need to talk to lawyers. And that's kind of, if we can't get past the first meeting, then they hand it off to us. It's just prudent that way. For example, one of the ones that's in that dark red bar is Ponca City because it's lawyer to lawyer. It's not that they're against it, it's just we work through lawyers.
Well, and we had it done, but there was an issue.
As engineers and land acquisition agents, we've exhausted our capacity to, to move those forward is really what that means. Any other questions? Commissioner Stolling?
Oh, good, thanks.
This is where those 17 locations are that are in the bridge team's court. The differentiation between the solid star and the, the, the non-solid star is just that the solid star is actually being dealt with by the city as we speak, and I thought it would be prudent to show that the, there's some more that are in line, and those are the non-solid stars that are represented there. And that's, that was also the reason why half of that bar is a different color. Our, your program management team, the Garver team, is also providing some final design support as part of our program management services. And so I want to talk a little bit about where we're at with, with some of those support activities. But before we do that, I want to, you may, you guys don't think this, this group has seen some of these photos, and so just a couple of things. This is a, this is what a survey stake looks like after we've been through there and surveyed the, the location here on the left. It says KLWS, Col Lake Water Supply, and it's got a, a number on it that, that means something to our surveyors and our, and our designers about its location and its, its elevation and so forth. It's also identifying, or like, like this, this, this one over here on the bottom right, you see the flags there as well. It's also identifying other utilities that, that may be in the way from where our proposed pipeline is. And you'll also see OG&E's power line in that, in that photo that we are paralleling for about 40 miles of the, of the 70 miles that, that the pipeline extends. There's some, at the top right up there is a field engineer who will, will be coordinating with the design team, looking at a constraint that the pipeline will be, will be dealing with. And so we actually getting some boots on the ground there for that, that culvert and how we deal with that. Mile marker 205, anybody want to guess what that is?
That's where it crosses I-35.
That's correct. That's correct. That is the approximate location of where your pipeline crosses I-35. So next time you're, you're headed north, after you get off of 412 and you want to go north, look for 205. That's about where your pipeline will be crossing. And then finally, these guys here are, are working with us on the, on the program management team to try and locate some utilities. And so what, what they're doing is, one of these guys has got a, a high-pressure wand in his hand, kind of like when you go to the car wash and you wash your car with that wand, except you wouldn't want to use this, this pressure on your car. Because what, what he's actually doing with that is he's digging a hole. It's, it's that high a pressure that he is digging a hole some four, five, six, maybe, you know, eight feet into the ground. And the guy standing there holding the, the pipe, looks like a pipe on the end of a hose, that's a vacuum. And he's vacuuming out the water and mud and debris as he eats away at the dirt to get down to where the utility is. And so the way, reason why we do that is to, we could also locate that with some technology, but it's not always accurate. Above-ground technology, but it's not always accurate. We could also bring a backhoe out there and dig around and try to find it. Well, the disruption to that landowner's much more if we had a backhoe out there, and we might grab a hold of a high-voltage power line and have some safety issues with whoever's in the backhoe. So this is a very non-evasive way to identify where those utilities are located with minimal disruption to our landowner's property. Anyway, that's some of the field activities that are going on. Hey, when we find stuff like that, but like utilities that are in the way with that type of technology, we end up finding stuff like this. And I, I just wanted to show you guys some of the challenges that we encounter as we're laying out the alignment for this pipeline. What we have here is, in red, we have the OG&E power line corridor, which we intended to parallel right the entire way, that, that corridor exists, about 40 miles of the 70. Well, what we found through the potholding, we call that potholding, where we're, where we're looking down to try to find those utilities, what we found during that potholding process as well as looking at different drawings and records and talking to companies that, that have oil and gas pipelines out there, there are about five different conflicts that we have encountered from this point to this point. There's Magellan and Phillips 66 pipelines that we have to cross here. There's saltwater disposal lines running in this direction right here. There are, there's another pipeline owned, oil and gas pipeline owned here. There's a tank battery, oil and gas tank battery here. And lo and behold, there's a landfill right in the middle of our corridor as well. And you don't want to put a pipeline through, through a landfill. So I just wanted to draw your attention to some of the value that we get by having those boots out on the ground to identify where these utilities are, are located. And we, and what we ended up doing, by the way, is we did not stay along this corridor of, of OG&E's power line. We ended up going down here and around, and then got back on the corridor here to head, head back toward Enid. Anyway.
So you just pass under that, those two pipelines once, and we go underneath them, right?
That's correct.
So even if there was something absurd happen, it wouldn't impact anything we're doing?
That's correct. Yeah. And when there's so many, I mean, we can usually go under a lot of things.
Right.
But when we, when we have to go under numerous things on, on a given location like this, plus the landfill in the way, it makes a lot more sense sometimes. And it, and there's an additional cost, too. But it makes a lot more sense, particularly for your operations staff and Lou and his team, to, to get away from this stuff so that when they have to go make a repair, they're not, their backhoe is not exposed to that stuff that's in the ground while they're out there making repairs. So that's utility locations. We've also been doing a lot of topographical and aerial survey along the 70-mile footprint of this project. And so this is, this is like the, I don't know, it looks like some kind of, something or other Batman would, would have in, in his arsenal, but it is actually a drone that we are using to fly the pipeline alignment. And what, what happens is, we, we fly this at about a 200-foot ceiling, and it'll go about four miles in one direction. And while it's doing that, at 30 miles an hour, it's taking high-definition ground surface photos. And the photo quality is better than what you can see on Google Earth. If you've been to Google Earth and looked in your backyard and can tell what's in your backyard, right? This is better quality imagery than what is on Google Earth. So they'll go down four miles, they'll take that, those, those pictures, they'll turn around and come back, and sometimes it's two or three times that they'll do that four-mile swath to get all the imagery that they need. But addition, in addition to just photos, we're also mapping the earth, the contour of the earth. So we're sending, you know, in addition to the photo we're capturing, we're, we're gathering whether or not the earth is going up or down, and how the ondulation, if you will, of the ground contours are behaving along that swath. So then we know how much excavation is involved for our designers to design around when they're laying the pipeline in that, in that corridor. Obviously, when there are trees in the way, we have to land the bird and get our boots on the ground and, and go out there and old-school physically determine what the, what the topography looks like. But this has been very helpful in, in a project of this magnitude. We've also, just, just so you know, we've notified our landowners that they're, that Batman is on the properties, so that if they see something, please don't shoot us down because it's a very expensive piece of equipment. Okay, with, that, that kind of wraps up the field activities that our program management team has been working on, and essentially, bear with me just a second, Chris, essentially completes most of the field activities for this program. Woo-hoo. Yay, that's a big milestone. Now, I'm not saying that we won't go out, back out there and have to get a few more shots from a surveyor, or maybe go have to locate some more utilities along the pipeline, that kind of thing. But the planned field recon is complete. So we're, we're really proud of that. Turn it over to you, Chris.
Okay. Last time we were up here, we showed you this slide. What we've actually gotten to now is, is we did do our source selection, and we are to that point where we're processing to get to one partner. Those are the appropriate dates. The criteria that we, we measured them on was how did they explain their approach to program management and execution? How are they going to take our 30% design and do give us a, a pre-GMP number so we can reconcile those numbers? And then obviously, pre-construction, how are they talking about integrating with our engineering group and working with us to, to help us with means and methods and, and improve the quality of our, of our product and, and get the best price that we can get? And then, of course, how are they going to do construction? And that included a large number of things to include, when did you plan on buying the pipe? How do you plan on laying it? How fast do you think you can go? What are your safety programs? What's your quality programs? Do you have an independent tester to help verify some of the, the conditions and, and that kind of stuff? And we ended up with an answer. And the answer is Gurnee Construction out of Kansas City. They came up as being the best qualified to meet the needs of the city of Enid. We had source selection staff, source selection committee with five of us from all of the sides of the, the program. So we did rank them in, in October, did interviews last week, or did an interview last week. We're working on doing site visits on two sites. One is a construction site of pipeline and a pump station. The other one is a water treatment plant. So it gives us that additional reassurance. And then come back in December to talk about awarding a contract for Phase 1. And Phase 1 is the pre-GMP, the first phase, where they provide us that cost opinion that we compare with ours.
What does that, what will that cost us?
Couple hundred. I'll let you know later, once we get done with the negotiation.
Okay.
So it'll be, it'll be pretty expensive.
How long will that part take?
30 days.
30 days?
30 to 45 days.
30 to 45 days is the goal. So when you ask for, when you ask for a construction firm to take on blind, set of 30% plans, and give me a number that you really think it can be, and not just a number with five or six zeros on it, you got to get some people involved.
Yeah.
And then we get to do some reconciliation. And then...
Hopefully not a whole lot of reconciliation, but, but yes.
Correct.
The 30%.
Well...
The great thing is when we have them on board, Garver's been tied loose already.
Yes.
Michael, you could probably tell us, I don't know if we're 32% or 35%.
Well, actually, it's in the slides.
Okay. But with the C-MAR onboard, there should be close coordination so that we get to 60%.
Oh, once, once we get past that 30%, and, and this body says, "Let's go," then there'll be a lot of close coordination. And we've got a couple of slides to give you, give you an idea of what we're talking about. Whoops. And now we're going to go back and talk into the design efforts that, that are currently ongoing.
Yeah, just, just following along with the agenda that Chris mentioned earlier, we talked about the PM, the program management services. Chris went through the C-MAR selection process, and now I'm going to update you on a different aspect of what Garver's doing for you, which is the design phase. Actually, progressing the design from 30% complete, which was the end of Phase 2, to 60% complete, where we lock in the final GMP. Now, since you guys have amended our contract to start the design, we have been, we have been progressing. And I want to show you some, beyond 30%. I want to show you what some of that progress looks like with a profile on each of the infrastructure pieces tonight. So if we start at the intake, I think those of you that are going to be out there Friday might get a chance to see some of the geotechnical work, fieldwork that's ongoing while you're there. Because we are mobilizing the geotechnical group. I should mention before I dive into the details here about the infrastructure, part of what we've been doing is building the design teams that are going to do this work, finalizing the scope of work associated with each of these elements, and, and some of the pre-design review and planning associated with moving it beyond 30%. But these are more of the physical activities I think you guys can kind of get your hands around a little bit. So there's been a lot more going on behind the scenes than I'm going to represent today. In addition to seeing the geotechnical folks out there Friday, you may, you may get to see those. We're also finalizing a water sampling plan. The reason why I wanted to talk about this tonight is, as, as the temperature changes, air temperature changes, so does water temperature. It takes a little bit of time to, for the water temperature to react to that temperature change, but over time it will change. And when water temperature changes, the behavior of the microbiology that's, that's going on underneath the water changes. And we have what's called a lake turnover. And what we want to try to do is capture that event when it happens in the spring, water warms back up. And what that's going to tell us is, where is this lake turnover having primary influence on the quality of water? And once we know what, at what elevation that is occurring, the range of elevations underneath the water where that's occurring, that helps us set, I'll move away from the microphone for just a second. That helps us set where the elevation of these intakes are on that pipe. You guys remember, remember that? So that water sampling plan is very important to help us kind of dial that in. We're also working to finalize the hydraulic analysis so that we can size the pumps at the intake and, and finish their design as well. Lots of coordination with the Corps of Engineers. We met, met with that team, the core team, last week. Everything's briefed, a, a new commander last week. All that went, went very well. Pipeline design status, mentioned all the field work that was done earlier with the survey and the utility locations. All that now is being integrated into the CAD drawings, the computer-aided design and drafting, integration of those surveys and utilities into the pipeline alignment. We're also, all, all that we've done to date is show where the alignment is, looking down on it. Now what we're doing is with this field data, and we know that there's an oil and gas line that's four feet deep at this location, now we're working on the vertical alignment of the pipe. So far, we've just been moving it from side to side, avoiding trees and wetlands and property and fence posts and that kind of stuff. Now with that field data that you guys sent us out to do, we're setting the vertical location of that pipeline along that 70-mile corridor. That's primarily what the, how the design has been progressing thus far. When we finish that component, then we'll know where the, what the pressure's going to be in the pipeline, because as you, as the pipeline gets deeper, the pressure goes up. Once we know what the pressure is along the entire pipeline, we'll be able to finalize the type of pipe, not necessarily the material, but maybe the material, but more along the lines of what material pressure class we have. So a steel pipe that's at 200 pounds per square inch, or a steel pipe that's at 300 pounds per square inch, so on and so forth. So just, again, probably more detail than, than you want tonight, but that's just some of the design progress that's occurred on the pipeline. All of this and the pre-work that we've done in an effort to drive more accurate pre-GMP cost estimating.
The blue pipe that, on the previous slide, is that what it's, looks like actually? I mean, that's, that's not our pipeline, but is that what the material looks like that you're putting in?
That's a, that's a fair representation, depending upon the manufacturer that we end up buying the pipe from.
Because it's concrete, right? Because it doesn't look like concrete.
Well, that's, that's probably a soil-resistant wrapping that's on that pipe. This photograph may represent, it's not your project, you're correct, Mayor, but it may represent a site that has corrosive soils. And so whether it's steel or concrete, whatever the material ends up being, sometimes we'll wrap those pipes in that area to, to prevent some of that corrosivity. Now, on your project, there are a couple of different means of corrosive, corrosion protection that we're employing that we'll talk about in other meetings in more detail.
Thank you.
It's a good question.
Do the, the weight of the, you said 200 pounds or 300 pounds, does that vary throughout the whole thing, or do you buy one type of pipe?
It will vary. It will vary.
Okay.
The, the pressure class, the, the pressure with which the pipe is able to maintain will vary along the, along the route.
Did you say we'd started buying pipe already, or we decided not to?
No, sir. No, sir, we have not, we have not purchased any pipe.
Okay.
We will work with your construction manager to determine when is the appropriate time to buy the pipe. They'll be responsible for that. They'll take ownership of the pipe.
All right.
When they do that. Which is a good thing.
So, Michael, let me ask.
Yes, sir.
So you, you don't know yet all the different quality of pipe or the pressure that you need, but I'm assuming based on that, that you were able to get a fairly good average of what you think that's going to be. So our number over here that we've projected all along, you still feel like that's going to fall somewhere in that ballpark?
Yes, sir.
Even though some of it's going to be a...
Yes, sir.
300 PSI and some of it at 200, right?
That's correct. Yeah, we don't think there's a lot of dramatic changes in the pressure class that, that will occur as a result of this development of the vertical alignment. But we have to do it just in case it does change.
No, no, I understand that.
But from a cost standpoint...
And I'm assuming also with the size of the, the pumps, right?
That's correct.
The amount of horsepower, and then we talked about 1,500 horsepower.
That's correct.
You feel pretty good that that's in the range of where we're going to be?
That's correct. Yes, sir. Yeah. I don't think anything that we're doing here has a dramatic change in the preliminary design that we did that would impact the cost.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, I assumed. Fair question. Now, moving on off the pipeline into the water treatment plant, one of the key elements of moving forward with the water treatment plan is receiving Department of Environmental Quality approval on the treatment plan. That plan is described in the city of Enid's engineering report, which we prepared on your behalf, and we are currently coordinating with DEQ on their review of that, of that treatment plan. I don't have any concerns about, about their comments to date, and we are, but we want to get them on, completely onboard and their approval of this engineering report before we proceed with a lot of design efforts. So Gerald of the, we've moved much of the design forward beyond 30%, but this is the one piece that's lagging because I don't want to get too far out ahead of DEQ and the C-MAR. There's a lot of moving parts at the treatment plant. There's a lot of opportunity at the water treatment plant. There's a lot of risk at the water treatment plant, so I'm trying to preserve your design budget until we clear some of that, that risk and some of those hurdles. budget until we clear some of that, that risk and some of those hurdles. Uh, and finally, after it leaves the water treatment plant, uh, the Chestnut Water Main, this is a, a separate, this is the finished water pipeline. This is now we have drinking water in this pipeline as opposed to the seventy miles of raw water that we had in the, in the other pipeline example. Um, I mentioned the, uh, the potholing earlier, and this is a little fancier description of what's actually going on there, but I'm not a fancy guy, so it's just potholing to me. But it's, it's non-invasive, uh, hydrovac potholing of this congested area. So that example that I showed you earlier, that picture of that back truck, vacuum truck out in a, in a field, that is also occurring in this urbanized, highly urbanized, highly congested, crowded corridor that is, that is Chestnut. And those are the pothole locations that we've identified there. Okay, uh, with that, I wanted to, we have some new commission members that may not have had a chance to, to see some of the, uh, the three D. I know you guys have seen the, the flooding and this video kinda starts off with the flooding, but, um, but it also takes us all the way through the project. So, so this is the flooding, which I think most of us have seen before. It's the low road flooded on the way into the intake site. Those of you that have had an opportunity to, to go out to the lake with us, you'll, this'll bring back a little bit of a memory of where we're at. There's the low road flooded there to the left during this, uh, high water event that we had this summer. This is the perspective, this is our, our visual here looking back at the bank and that's where the intake is located. That's how high the water got up on the planned intake site during the historic flooding of this summer. There's the, uh, the intake, there's the intake's locations, the elevations I was talking about earlier. Typical construction method here, trenching for the pipeline. These are some standard details of items that'll be along this pipeline. Once we get to Enid, we have our, our terminal storage reservoirs where the raw water will be deposited. We have to lift the water up out of those terminal storage reservoirs, pass through ozonation, that's the first treatment step. Then through flocculation and sedimentation basins to remove the soil and turbidity solids that are in the water. Some chemical feed occurs between there and this filtration complex. Where we go through a multimedia filter as well as granular activated carbon. This is where the solids that are removed from the water are managed. This, that's, that was a, a look down Chestnut, administration building, some of the amenities that were originally planned but are not, no longer in the current project. So anyway, we can get you copies of that too, if you guys would like to take a look at that. But that's, that's kinda the status of the design phase of the program. The last piece is, Chris asked me to talk a little bit about how the City of Enid, Garver and Garni, this, the construction manager will collaborate moving forward. And Gerald, I think you had a couple of questions on this earlier. This is the way we're organized. The program management team and the design engineer, a la Garver, reports to the City of Enid. The construction manager's team reports to the City of Enid. And then there's forced collaboration between program management team, the engineer and the contractor. Why? To make sure that we're getting the best value for the City of Enid. We're bringing a contractor into the room during the design phase. That's not normal. It's becoming more normal. Typically, we go off and design our project with our own construction expertise and then we bid the job. And we wait to see what happens on bid day. This body made a decision to collaborate with that construction partner prior to bid day so that we have some more control over cost. That's what's about to happen. Let me talk a little bit more about how that collaboration unfolds. So we have already set the design intent. We have already set the demand, the, the size of the program. We've already set the quality of the water that we're targeting. We've set the quality of pipe material, the quality of concrete, all that stuff we have already established. We've already set the standard of what you expect in your program and we've put a cost associated with that. We're bringing on a partner in the construction manager to review where we're at with that quality and, and cost. And they're gonna make a determination in a workshop with the city and Garver on how close we are to our original cost estimate. Now, if we are in the same ballpark, we're gonna ask them to identify what it is quality wise that they suggest we change, what it is capacity wise that they suggest that, that we change. Those are gonna be some tough decisions that we're gonna need city council on. But they're also gonna make some recommendations about constructability and, and how I, I'm, I, I may think is the best way to build a wall is probably different than the way they think the best way to build a wall. And when we're not talking about one of these walls, we're talking about hundreds of feet, several feet wide, several feet deep. So minor changes in how we construct that wall has major ramifications on your cost. That's what we're looking for, is that type of collaboration, all of us in the room working on constructability issues. Uh, once we, we pass that milestone, they will develop a pre-GMP cost. They will work with us hand in glove from a thirty percent design we're at now through the sixty percent design. Once they are comfortable with what they are building and you are comfortable with the quality and capacity of this program and the schedule associated with, with their recommendation, we will lock in a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price, assuming that price is in your budget. If not, we will continue to work with that contractor to figure out how to get in your budget.
So we don't get the guaranteed minimum price until the sixty percent threshold limit?
You get a, yes.
How close is the pre-guaranteed minimum price?
That's, that's once you hire, once you get these guys under contract, that's a thirty to forty-five day process for the pre-GMP.
For the pre-GMP?
For the pre-GMP.
Right.
Which is really checking the thirty percent estimate, right?
That's right.
So we don't actually get our guaranteed minimum price until when?
Guaranteed maximum price.
Sorry, guaranteed maximum price.
Yeah, I think it's, is it, I, I've actually got the schedule coming up. I'll just go ahead and buzz around for it. Is it June, Gerald?
My June, I think.
Establish guaranteed maximum price, July eight, July nine, twenty twenty.
I thought we were gonna have that a lot. Guys, I really thought we were going to be, beginning of the year, having some close order number. We are, we're six months off from where we were, thought we were gonna be on a number.
We are, and we talked about being about six months behind, I think we're about.
No, no, sorry, six months behind from where we were when we started the C Mar process of, okay, when do we know what our number is? And, and that was when we started the C Mar process, okay, we should have some idea in, in January, February. We're now looking like July.
We, we will in January, February, the thirty percent, but it's not the GMP, you're right.
Well, I mean, but that was my question, is what's the, the, what we get at thirty percent, how, I mean, that's not actually a number that has any teeth to it. It'll be one of these, what, what Michael gives us of, of X plus or minus thirty percent or something, right?
Something close to that. But more importantly, they'll tell us, we think we can build it for this. We're not ready to sign up for it, but this is what we think we can build it for. We compare that to what, what Garver provided us.
Yeah, but if they, if they get to the sixty percent and have said and, and come back and say, oh, oh, that number is actually, we were, we were twenty-five percent off that first go around, but you've now spent another five million dollars in engineering, uh, you're in bed with us, um, let's go. I mean, that's the.
Well, the engineering will have to be spent regardless of which way we do it. I think we'll know in January, February.
Well, only if we can afford the pipeline. I mean, if, if that's.
Well, sure, that's, that's, that's true regardless of how we do it. We will know in January, February if we're way off.
We will know if we're way off.
That's what they were talking about with reconciliation. I'm expecting we're not gonna be way off, but we're gonna know in January, February. Now, is it the GMP number? No, that's coming in July. And this, the whole reason we stopped and backed up to do this was to have opportunities for cost control.
Mm-hmm.
Schedule control. We've slipped on the schedule, no doubt. I'm anticipating we might be able to make some of it up, I don't know, but I'm thinking we're gonna be better off taking this approach. I may be wrong when these numbers come in.
Well, I thought we were also.
First indication in January.
Preserving options, I mean, I, and a part of what we were wanting to do with, with the C Mar and what we've done so far is, is not tie our hands. I mean, there's, there's a point at which we're, we're kinda stuck with it, right?
There's two off ramps.
Yeah.
There's one when we get our thirty, when we get our pre-GMP. And there's another one when we get our GMP.
What, what's it gonna cost us? I mean, so it's a couple hundred thousand dollars on that order to get to thirty. What's it cost us to get from, from, from January to July?
That hasn't been negotiated yet.
Ballpark and what order of magnitude?
Million, million and two.
Okay, so somewhere on that.
Rough guess.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that's.
Premature.
Yeah, difficult to say in this environment. We haven't, we haven't engaged the contractor yet.
Mm-hmm.
And there's so much of the playbook I think we wanna share at this point.
Be glad to talk with you in more detail about that, that later. But I wanna, what I wanna remind you about is the presentation I gave previously where we talked about buying risk or shifting risk and who pays for that risk. If we locked in with the pre-GMP at thirty to forty percent complete design, we're gonna pay for more risk. The GMP's going to be higher because they haven't seen the full design. So as we progress through thirty to sixty with them in the room, they know more about what we wanna build because they helped design it.
But they also know, the whole world knows what our budget is on this.
Yes.
And so they know, I mean, they're gonna give us, I think, a good answer of what they can do because if they don't and we change methods, they're not eligible for the design bid bill, right?
Correct.
So that's a powerful incentive for whoever you, in our opinion, if you want.
Commissioner Razzell is correct. We originally anticipated that we would know better the health of the program financially at about this time. And that is a pre-GMP. So.
What's the, what's the, um, contingency percentage we expect to get on our price estimate at thirty percent?
I really can't tell you that right now.
What are we at now, Michael?
It depends, on the pipeline, we're as low as fifteen percent. On the treatment plant, we're as high as thirty, thirty-five percent.
I haven't seen one of those price breakdowns in a while with our percentage confidence and.
Sure.
I'd sure like to see that.
You bet.
Yeah, we, those are really available on some previous slides, phase two slides.
Absolutely.
Where we're at.
Can do.
All good, good discussion. Good, good questions. Collaboration, I'm gonna buzz through these real quick just to kinda give the commission a feel for how we're gonna work, the three of us, city, Garver and C Mar are gonna work together, uh, during the design phase. Uh, and these, these, the size of these pieces of the pie are fairly close to the level of involvement of each of the entities. So you can see the largest piece of the pie during the design phase is obviously the engineer, but there is also a, uh, a high level of involvement by the construction manager looking at, uh, you know, technological solutions, things they have done nationally or worldwide, which by the way was part of their evaluation of the qualifications, was bringing technology solutions to Enid, Oklahoma, as well as the constructability, uh, that I mentioned earlier, a different way, a cheaper way to build a wall and then means and methods of installing things like the pipeline, you know, just different, different things that they're bringing to this project. Obviously, our role as engineers continue with the system infrastructure design, making sure it still meets the functionality that was developed in phase, phase two. Um, and then the, the design change management, if we're, if we feel like, hey, that, that's not acceptable because it's gonna change the, the size of the program or hey, that's not acceptable because it's gonna change the quality of the pipe material. That gets input in, in your course on whether or not to make those type of quality or sizing changes. During the construction phase, you can see the changes in the size of the pie. Uh, logic, logically, it makes sense that the construction manager who's managing the construction, hiring all the construction contractors and so forth, um, they are, uh, they are, they're primarily leading that phase. Uh, from an engineering standpoint, we're just providing support, any issues with the drawings, responses to inquiries, uh, some, reviewing what they intend to, to install from an equipment standpoint to make sure it meets the intent of the design. And then obviously city and PMT here still with change management, construction oversight. We're also providing the operational training. Uh, we, we have that capability within our firm. Um, the city is, uh, providing the executive leadership yourself, uh, any emergency protocols and continuing the, the, to be the conduit between our stakeholder, stakeholders on the program. So we usually start with this slide, but tonight we're ending with this slide, reminding you where we're at. We are in phase three. Uh, survey is complete, C Mar selection's complete, file design is progressing, uh, land acquisition is progressing, environmental permitting is progressing, nearly complete. Um, and it's about time to start working on that GMP once we get the C Mar in the room. Phase four, of course, is the construction phase. Uh, the things I wanted to point out about this schedule tonight, um, it's a little bit different view than what you've seen in the past. And I'm sorry that you can't read it, so I'm gonna point out what, what I want to take away. I think it's in your packet, but this is a critical path schedule and we have four major items here that are kinda driving the critical path. To us, the critical path and, and your staff, the critical path is when closed the loan with the water resources board. Favorable interest rates, uh, kinda know what we're getting into, can we get to that finish line sooner so we can take some of that cost risk? The, the inflation of interest rates, can we take some of that cost risk out of this program? So that's, that's the, that's the endpoint here on July twenty. Uh, some of the things that are kinda in the way, uh, that need to complete, be completed is we have to have the NEPA approval.
Aren't we locked in on the water, with the water resources board on that interest rate?
We have one final loan package, which is the big one. That we will be going back to, possibly two hundred million is what we're thinking right now. So no, we're not. That's what he's referring to. That last package is not done yet. There were about four packages, I think we've completed, three loans, I think two F R Fs and one F A P.
Good, good question. There's another big, big package coming though that we're trying to get to, as Gerald mentioned. So one of those, one of those items that we've gotta get, get completed is that environmental assessment because federal dollars are involved, we have to have NEPA approval to close, to close the loan. Other items that are, that, that need to be completed, uh, approval of that engineering report that I mentioned earlier on the water treatment plant. The length of this arrow is the float that we have, so we've got a lot of time to, 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 to fix that up. Another item we need to close the loan is the GMP, the guaranteed maximum price. We gotta know how much loan we're, right? So we gotta get those guys in the room, we gotta get that pre-MG, pre-GMP, we gotta start collaborating with each other during the design phase to, to, to find out where these cost efficiencies are and, and, and nail that construction cost. But the other one that I, I wanna draw your, the final one of the four, I wanna draw your attention to is the easement acquisition. We're doing good, okay? But we can't rest. That's the, I, I wanna encourage, I've been, I'm encouraging my land acquisition team to keep their foot on the gas. This is still the highest schedule risk to the program because we don't have all of our easements in hand, then it's gonna be impossible, maybe, maybe the wrong word, very difficult, very difficult.
Federal funds are involved.
To close that loan. They're not gonna loan us money on proper, to build something on property we don't have easement to.
So do we see anything on those seventeen packets then that can get tied up for a long period of time in court?
I think there could be some, uh, I'll, I'll just tell you, I think there's one or two that, that maybe, we may be looking at a legal remedy to go through and, and we have somebody hired to do that. At, at, at sometime soon, you may be seeing an item on that because that would take your approval to proceed with that route. As I said, some of those seventeen are, I didn't catch exactly what you said, but I'm seeing them as anticipated.
Lawyer to lawyer, issues.
There's, there are several lawyers involved and we're hopeful that lawyer to lawyer can solve some of the problems and I think that maybe they have already on, maybe not some of those seventeen, but on some others. So yes, but I will say what, and I've had firsthand direct contact with OWRB and DEQ, the requirements to get that loan closed are gonna be G, GMP or G, GMP and the environmental assessment.
For sure, and the engineer's report.
And we are looking to see, is there a way to close even earlier than that? Cause normally you could, the normal process, you wouldn't close until a hundred percent of the engineering's done and you have a bid in hand, a, a lot of times.
Correct. And, and that you can certify the property.
Right, right, so that, the reason I'm telling you this is we're making every effort to close early, so what I hear is, yeah, we'll keep our foot on the gas. We want to keep our foot on the gas to get the C Mar on board, get the thirty day review and get moving because there's a lot of pieces. Fortunately for us, at this moment, interest rates are pretty low, but what they're going to be in July, nobody can say. So the sooner we can close, the better because it eliminates risk, and so we are doing that, your team is working on that. I have asked the engineers to focus more on get the rest of that stuff done because the loan closing stuff, we've got plenty of help, we've got Alan Brooks and we've got John Wolf, and we've got Aaron Crawford, so I know we're making progress there. I think in the end, it's gonna be beneficial, the route we take it, even though it's cost a delay now or potentially a delay. Because we're gonna find out if we have a problem sooner, we're gonna know in January if we have a problem, I'm not anticipating a big problem, but I'm anticipating the C Mar will have a different number than, than what we have. So you guys will get that presented to you before we move forward to engage the C Mar to go to sixty percent. At those two times, or probably those two times specifically, we can off-ramp, if we off-ramp, we're right back to design bid build. So we will not know what the real cost is then until we get to a hundred percent. So either way you look at it, this is the best way to go in my opinion right now. And I just want to take this opportunity to remind everybody again, when we started this project, this is the most complicated, difficult project the city's ever taken on, and the most expensive, I don't have to tell any of you that, so this may be more for the public. I think they know that too, they've overwhelmingly supported it. And we're gonna continue, so, so what I'm saying is, we are progressing. There will probably be more challenges, I think you guys already know that, we're gonna overcome those challenges. So, anyway.
And the takeaway.
I hope that answers your question.
The takeaway, are these four things that we talked about what we're gonna have to take care of to get to that loan closing? And so we, we must stay on it. And I've always told you that land acquisition is the highest scheduled risk and the lowest technical risk. But there's, there's one hundred and forty plus interfaces on land acquisition. And we control none of them, but one. So. So hopefully we'll get some packages up to Gerald for him to move on. Look at, look at these guys, gals, this is some of the trips we've had to date. I think the one that I got to go on was much, much colder than the one Gerald got to go on.
Scott went on the second one, so.
Yeah, there's Scott right there, yeah. I, I hope that these have been beneficial, I hope that it's given you a different perspective. I think you guys and, and previous commissions have done a really good job keeping up with what's on paper and what's in these presentations, but there's nothing like having boots on the ground. And appreciate your, your participation in those, in those events. And advertisement, we have one coming up this Friday. And so if you haven't had a chance to participate, or you want to participate again.
I think Rob and Derwin, and I haven't heard Ben, may not.
Yeah, I'm not feeling too lucky, unfortunately.
Anytime you want to go and have time.
I would love to one of these days.
I have a grin because my face was frozen that night.
Our weather's not gonna be too horrible this Friday.
Fighting the wind.
Damn day job.
It was as cold as it looks.
Hey, I really do appreciate y'all setting this up, that was so helpful for me, I just, you can look at it over and over on paper, but until they actually drive you down the route and see some of those obstacles. And I know that we had a lot of concern about where the pumping station was gonna be and that, that made me feel a lot better after I kind of saw that and could see the dam. So that, that was very beneficial, thank you.
And I will add that when we were talking to the Corps of Engineers last week, we showed them our video of the, the flood stage. And they, they wouldn't say we were spot on, but they said, yeah, that looks pretty close, you're okay. That's a bureaucratic yes, by the way. Anything else?
When you sent us a copy of the RFP
Yes.
That we sent out, the appendices that were attached to RFP were not, I think, attached to the email. I kind of wanted to see, one of the appendix was a, like a form for the GMP, or a GMP template, rather, was one of the appendix that I'd kind of like to, you'd email those around to.
Let me get with Gerald and.
Is there any reason we can't just post those on the website, we can send them to these guys, but.
It, it's not really appropriate, because it's, it's a template and it's numbers that they picked. It's not what they're proposing.
We'll, we'll visit, but we'll get the information out there.
Yeah, no, I want to see it.
No, I, I, I think I know exactly what you're looking to see.
Well, I want to see the, you know, all the appendices that weren't attached to the RFP when you sent them to us.
Did you get the two contracts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
All right. Next up, item number four, update from Visit Enid.
Yeah, I think Rob and Lisa and Marcy maybe are gonna come on, maybe Kevin.
Well, good evening, I'm Rob Houston with Visit Enid, and our presentation tonight is actually going to be on a group called Enid First, which is a consortium of Visit Enid, Main Street Enid, Enid Regional Development Alliance, the Chamber, and the City. And I'm gonna basically turn my time over to Lisa Powell, the Director of ERDA, as she's prepared our talk for this evening, so.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners and City Manager. Rob doesn't get to go too far in case he wants to add to anything we have to say here, because this really is a team effort, I think we kind of did rock, paper, scissors to see who got to present today. So, as, as Rob said, so this has been a committee of these five organizations that have met since two thousand eleven, two thousand eleven, we've worked on a lot of initiatives on behalf of the city. Most notable is our new logo and brand that's been developed for the city of Enid. That also evolved into wayfinding signage, let's see. Oh, here's our members, so those are the organizations as well as some of the members that participate, we meet more or less monthly just to coordinate our marketing activities and ensure that we're supporting one another and not overlapping in our responsibilities. Again, some of the things that we have worked on in the past, including support for the COA Pipeline Sales Tax Vote. That involves some education and awareness on behalf for the community, and so we were involved in some of that. I would say though, each of our organizations is always continually marketing Enid in each of our own ways. This Enid First initiative is really a way for us to combine our efforts and do something together. And we are happy to announce our next campaign, and it is called Play Again. And you can see a sample of it here, we have, we believe that Enid has a lot of opportunities to come and play in Enid, and I know Marcy's sitting back there because she could probably go through this pretty quickly, but. So we've got children's museums, we have railroad museums that you can play, it also extends to all of our athletic venues in the way of soccer and, and baseball that we have going on. It extends into participating in our symphony and in our cultural activities across town, so I'm gonna run through a lot of ads here, we've got a series of about fifteen images that we have put together to advertise over the next three months, different activities and events and venues to visit in Enid. This one is about Leonardo's Children's Museum. When your daily grind needs a little polish, playinenid.com and that URL will take you to the Visit Enid website where we have a matching landing page that we will show you here in a little bit for visitors to land on when they click through any of these ads. So here we have, when your stress relief is just a few hops away at Enid Brewing Company. When your daily grind needs a whole latte love at either of our coffee houses. And I won't go read each of these, but you can kind of see the theme we have here and how we plan to market this, obviously, to attract visitors to our community. I think it will also be an excellent opportunity to remind our citizens of all the fun things that we have available to do in Enid. Leonardo's Cherokee Strip Regional Heritage Center. Railroad Museum, when your search engine needs a new conductor at the Railroad Museum, so. We're real excited about this campaign, this will roll out, obviously, Enid Lights Up the Plains is a big event coming up later this month, that you'll start seeing these. Again, highlight our attractions, events, and venues, things to do in Enid, raise awareness of what we have to offer for both citizens and visitors and people who used to live in Enid, ages twenty-one to sixty-five, radius within three hundred and fifty miles of Enid. So as far as those different audiences, really, the city of Enid and Main Street Enid and the Chamber are primarily, obviously, marketing to citizens. Whereas Visit Enid and ERDA, we are obviously typically marketing to people who live outside of the community, and so that three hundred and fifty mile radius that you saw, we mentioned there, we're gonna be pushing some of these digital ads out to that radius around Enid so that that will capture Dallas, Fort Worth, Kansas City, Wichita, Amarillo, Little Rock, I believe it goes that far, so. Primarily because that is where we get most of our visitors from, are from people within that region, that's also where most people who used to live in Enid have moved to. And so hopefully we'll pique their, pique their interest and cause them to maybe want to come back and see what's going on in Enid. We will do this quarterly right now, so this is representing events between now and the end of this year, and we're already looking at things we might highlight for the next quarter. Obviously, all these options here and where we may be, you may be seeing some of these ads. We have a billboard with a question mark there, we haven't officially decided whether or not we're gonna purchase a billboard with one of these. This is a picture of the landing page, playinenid.com directs you to this site on the Visit Enid website. And so this is the top page, top of the page here on this site. One of the things we felt was very important was that when you hit one of these ads and you click through to find more information, was that the place you landed looked like where you started, so that you felt like you were in the right place. If we had just left this page to match the typical Visit Enid page, it's not gonna have the same branding and look and, and font and that type of thing, and so this is why we set a specific page for that. At the bottom of this page, you will see all of the ads there so that while someone might land on this page because they click through from the Railroad Museum ad that they found, they will obviously be able to see that there are other opportunities to play in Enid at all of these other locations. And they can easily jump from this page to our full calendar of events in Enid as well. Do you want to add anything about this? Since this is your site?
Well, the, the top slide, go back to that, yeah. The, the very top one, that's gonna be a rotating page, so there's gonna be about five or six different slides that will continue to roll back and forth on that one. Including one that has just the Play Again symbol with a map of Enid, because we're really finding that the big question we get is where is Enid? And we all know it's obvious and, but, I mean, I go to trade shows in Oklahoma City and Tulsa, and I get asked all the time, where is Enid? You'd think they would know in their geography lessons, but they don't. So we've made that part of one of the slides also, but we really wanted to come up with a problem that you face in kind of everyday life and a solution here in Enid. So that's, that's what we've kind of come up with there, and again, this is, this is a, we bought the domain, the playinenid.com, we bought that domain to put it onto our visitenid.org page. And we just kind of, as a group, decided that that would be the best place to house this kind of site as, again, between ERDA and Visit Enid, we're the main marketers outside of Enid and Garfield County. So while the, you know, the other organizations are certainly involved, you know, Main Street does a lot of downtown, we're doing a lot with Enid Lights Up the Plains, we don't have any First Friday slides on there now because First Friday's over until April. So we will look at either late first quarter or early second quarter before we roll out some of the First Friday slides. So we're trying to keep it a little bit seasonal and, but at the same time, highlight everything Enid has to offer as far as getting away, a little escape for people that need to just break away from that daily grind that they go through.
So I might add, as we were looking through images that we could use for this campaign, we came up with hundreds and as well as sayings that could go along with those images, and so we've had a lot of fun with it, so. I think Kevin would tell us that probably to have a successful campaign, this needs to run for twelve to eighteen months in order to get the repetition in place for people to be familiar with it. So we, I think we anticipate at least doing it through twenty twenty.
Hey, Lisa.
Yes.
When, one of the classes that we attended over the O M L conference a few months ago, they talked about partnering with other surrounding communities maybe that have something to offer, but they don't necessarily have the ability to do this. Have we thought about, and I don't know, we'd have to think what it was, but is there some things in some surrounding communities that we could put up there, knowing that they would probably still come to Enid to stay the night and hopefully do some of those other things, but.
Well, I'll let Rob address that, because I know Visit Enid works continuously with our regional partners to promote activities and group tours into Enid that goes out and sees other areas. Whether or not we want to invest on, in this campaign on those types of things, we can talk about, I don't know.
We, we work very closely with Red Carpet Country, which is one of the, the states divided into six different tourism organizations, and Red Carpet Country is Northwest and North Central Oklahoma. And Enid is the largest city in Red Carpet Country. And so we do a lot of promoting Gloss Mountains, for instance, or Little Sahara. You know, those, those things where people will go there, but they're still gonna come back to Enid and perhaps spend the night, do some shopping, dining, that kind of thing, so, so yes, we are looking at that, we've just been focusing on Enid right now as we just get this started, but we can certainly evolve and look at some of those other things and some of those other communities and what they have to offer.
Yes, sir.
So we plan to launch these ads tomorrow, as you see them, please like and share them. Also, I just throw in that the wayfinding signage is still being installed, and I, you know, our partner here at the city is working hard on that. And we'll just do, go a long way to reinforce these venues as people come to town to see the things we're advertising and, and find them easily through our wayfinding signage, so. Any other questions? No? Okay.
Any, any comments from Marcy or Kevin that you want to add?
I appreciate Rob mentioning the map issue, and I know we all think everybody knows where Enid is, but I can't ask you enough that anyone in Enid that gives away a business card, if they will, please put a map on their business card. And we'd be glad to provide you the graphic to put on your business card. But truly, that is the number one question we did, where is Enid? They either think we're past Woodward, they think we're up close to the Kansas border, they don't know, we're straight north of Oklahoma City, thirty minutes on I-35. For some reason, that just isn't sinking in, so we're discovering that and we'll be focusing on that more and more. So maps are critical, and yes, we, I've been on the board of Red Carpet Country for about nine years now. And while we're the big brother for the region, we do support the entire region because at some point, Enid will, Enid will get its traffic. We just need more people coming to this part of the state, and we work very hard to make that happen, whether it's partnering with Woodward, partnering with Kansas City, or the Great Salt Plains, so many people come through here, so we're continually looking for partners to get more people to come out to this part of the state.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Mayor?
No.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right. Carol, do we have time for number five? Yeah, it's not gonna take very long, this is to help answer the question, Commissioner, you've asked about an idea of the revenue from all these marijuana shops. I believe we have a few months of data, she will tell us, and then you may have extrapolated it for a year if it holds that.
Yeah, absolutely, based on the interest that we've had over the past few months, and then discussions after O M L, we've done a little research, I've worked with the code department to get some information on who they've done inspections on. As you know, O M M A issues licenses, doesn't mean that the business is in operation, and so trying to get down to what is that list of places that are truly in operation, working with the tax commission to get a list of what are their sales tax permit numbers, so we can try and match up names with businesses. One thing that we've done to help with that going forward is include some information on the application for the inspection feed through code going forward, so that we'll readily have that information on hand already, whenever they apply to get those inspections done, so Ken did a great job getting information to help us out on doing some of the tracking there. We've gone through and compiled the last twelve months of data that we have, which is October of eighteen through September of nineteen. The total amount collected in sales tax to the city from those organizations is one hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. That is equating to four point one four million dollars in sales through those dispensaries in the city of Enid. Over that year, you'll see there's a. Over that year, you'll see there's a trend up in the data and number of dispensaries reporting as they more have opened and been in operation. If I look at where we started to level off, about the last five months have been more consistent in the amount that's been reported, and that would, that would put us at receiving just under $27,000 a month, and if I annualize that over a year, it'd be $322,000, that I would anticipate based on the last five months, that we would collect over the next 12 months. When you look at that in comparison of the 35.4 million we've collected in sales tax, it's still only nine tenths of 1% of what we're collecting in sales tax. And that's what I've been able to find out. Any questions I can answer for you?
That's very helpful.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I wish we could have that kind of granular detail about all the various retailers and industries in town. I mean, that's, it's just, it's frustrating.
It would take a whole staff.
I know, and it's frustrating that it's not available more readily through OTC, I mean, that there's not a better, because OTC has all this data. I mean, they have, they have incredibly granular data, but, but we just, as a municipality, despite the fact that it's our sales tax, we don't have a great way to receive a lot of that, seems like.
So did that include the grow houses as well?
No, the only people that pay sales tax are the people who sell to end users, and so it's just the dispensaries.
Okay.
All right, one final word, just wanna introduce everybody. I don't think everybody knows Colonel Tony Waldrup is here representing the ex officio from Vance today. He's here because Colonel Simmons, a week ago, had a knee, total knee replacement, so I think the guy that's got the hardest job on base right now is probably him trying to keep Colonel Simmons in a recovery mode instead of a go after mode. But anyway, welcome to, welcome to the team, sir, we'll see you upstairs. That said, we'll adjourn here and meet upstairs at 6:30.